Six thirty. Call the meeting to order.
Yeah.
Don, Phil, you're going to work for him?
Heavenly Father, we vow before you, Lord, to thank you for loving us and helping us and for everything that you've done for us, Lord. We're so thankful for it and we thank you for these jobs that we have and we just pray that you'd help us to use these jobs to help Huckleberry to grow and prosper. And we ask that you'd bless all the sick people out there, Lord, just be with them and comfort them and heal them if it could be your will. And we ask now, Lord, as we go through this meeting, you'd just guide us all and direct us and forgive us where we fail you. And we'll give you the praise for it all. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to call the meeting to order?
Motion.
Andy. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Come on, we want to have.
All right. Need a motion and a second to cover on to what's on the agenda.
Motion.
Andy. Second.
Second.
Kevin. All in favor? All right. Reading of the minutes on nine, nine nineteen. If y'all don't care to read over them, Charlotte is not feeling too good tonight. Everybody had time to read over them?
Okay.
Any corrections?
Since we done away with the original ordinance.
We have made it on the nine twelve special.
Where did the eighteen thousand end up going? In the general fund?
No, we still put that, did you, did, we decided to put it in.
Put it in the, no, we put it in that account.
Back in, back in the, to, for the pressure store. We put it in there anyway.
Just for a base.
We're still holding the money to make sure if something happened and we needed to buy the building back, that we would have some money too.
So we're going to continue putting ten thousand dollars and also half a cent tax in that? Is what we're doing?
That ain't what we're doing.
Um, when we read nine, your next set of.
That's what we did, done.
I think we done away with the half cent.
Cause it's not in this, it's not in the special section.
The action's been abolished when we sold it.
Cause nine, the minutes from September the twelfth doesn't say anything about what happened.
Well, they can just put that money in general fund and pay that other car off. But we don't own the building anymore. It's sold. We're having to war free of that, the rest of the thing. We signed the date over and they bought it, so we don't need that money.
Y'all tried to read it like it was and I didn't call them and.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine. But I mean, we can.
That's because we, we got first right to refusal on the building. So we were going to let some money continue to build it up.
Okay.
I'm willing with that. I'd love to be willing to build whatever I have sent.
No, we were going to keep it.
So is that going to show up on this?
It will when it starts. It started in October. So we don't have it yet.
No, we still, we got some money in there right now. Did you transfer eighteen thousand dollars? So that should, should be showing up in this.
Okay.
Okay.
But the, the half a cent started ten one.
Okay.
That's what I was saying.
So we're going to continue to take that?
Yeah, we're going to go five years of it, but if, y'all remember, we talked about we had first right to refusal and we were going to continue to.
Yeah.
Grow a little money in case something happened.
And I'll go back and I'll add this and just say that.
That's really good.
I'm right on that, had a time?
Yes, you are. That's exact.
We can always, if they get them down, need something, we can have.
A hundred, you know, some got to prevent something happen.
Yeah.
Buy the building back.
Well, you wouldn't have first dibs on that building. First dibs to whoever he's got. A lot of, they'll sell it, they'll sell it to a lady.
Yeah, what we're saying, he has to give a ninety day notice to the town.
Yeah.
And then we have the opportunity before to foreclose your bank route.
Yeah, we got first shot at it early on.
I don't think if we were not, if they ain't holding that tight, it don't matter. Hopefully, we won't ever have to worry about that. Through them, yeah. I mean, they, they can sell it to whoever.
That was.
Before they actually sign.
That was in the contract, though, was it?
They signed papers, they.
It was.
Yeah.
But he, he just done that, those ones, they signed the contract if they foreseen selling it, you know, or they getting a finance, they have a bank with us.
Up front.
And let us know, that way we can bet on, you know, say, go to the bank and say, look, they can't make a payment, we're taking over as long, or, you know, buy it out of right here.
So do the ten thousand dollars per year, is that coming out also on October the first? So, okay. So there should be twenty eight thousand plus whatever in there.
At the end of October.
Huh?
No, I mean.
You're not going to take it out on this October first?
Yes.
Yes.
But I mean, it'll take it a month.
Where are you October?
Yeah. You know what, what does it do?
Hang on, let's do it.
That's right.
Instead of doing that, we should have just used it right there and give them a half cent back, if we done got a reserve anyway. Like about that. All right. Uh, need a motion to accept the minutes of September nine.
So move.
Don. Second.
Second.
There. All right. If y'all want to read over September twelfth. Maybe you have to stay a little bit down there.
Yeah.
What we have done.
Yeah, that's how I, I already read both of them. I just didn't see anything on the money transfer where it's still going, cause it wasn't in the minutes.
Yeah, it wasn't there.
That's why I was asking, well, yeah.
I think that, that got, in all the discussion, that I will come in, I got some notes made. I will put the half cent sales tax will stay the same as voted, as well as the transfer of the commercial development authority money, the ten thousand, uh, to the new account and the ten thousand dollars per year from the occupational account. I'll, I'll put that into this minutes.
We can look at that five years and see how the store is doing and, you know, what we need to fill up.
Cause we said we do an assessment after.
Right.
That was in the original.
Somebody will.
Somebody will.
Look at one limb.
Yeah. Never does.
All right. Need a motion to accept the minutes of September twelfth?
Yeah.
I had, I can't go on it.
Second.
All in favor?
You got a financial statement? Nine eleven five.
Oh, she's going with that, that, that other account.
Yeah, yes.
I'm on the next one, yeah.
I think with, uh, some of the city capital improvement money, the park has really run down. I mean, there's not much over there for the kids to do. Um, we need to start taking a look at, maybe getting some grant money or whatever. But we can use some of this money right here and get it up to date. And, um, down at Wigginton, at their walking trail, I wouldn't mind seeing them get, uh, making a swing and slide and a few items down there for people that live on that side of town. So we'll kind of come up with a plan next week.
When'd they get their sign down there?
Uh, one of the Wigginton founders donated it to them.
Dan. Dan Wigginton.
Sign it up.
Oh, that's a.
Community building.
Um, Dan is, um, the grandson of Arlen and Moselle Wigginton. Um, they were, they lived down in that area years and years and, uh, his grandmother was my grandpa's sister.
Oh.
I'm related to him.
Benny, Jerry, Matt, some business person he's like. What Mama's mother, Wigginton. Marie. Yeah, sure will. Marie and Archie.
I'm sure that Arlen was related to your grandmother.
But we need somebody to put a plan together, how much it is, and we can, we can get some help.
Yeah.
Occupational tax, so, not ours, the state. Uh, they helped town in big time with the project. Through our RCD council. So we need to do the same thing. We need to get a plan together and ask them for whatever we need. Cause they, we need it. We, we ain't, like you said, we ain't got nothing for the kids probably on there.
And Charlotte Howe, she called and they have got thirty something. Yes, they got thirty something hundred dollars left over that they're going to give the town to go toward a park or whatever, you know, to help the community.
They got left in there. All that money, that'd make six thousand. That was it.
Yeah. That money. So, anyway, we, we'll get with, uh, the.
If you're going to buy a play right quick, Ms. Palmer, cause they got a better deal on the elementary playground equipment, cause you can buy it, it's cheaper. And that way we can see if something can be applied, you know, from estate there. Cause if you go straight out, probably it's going to be expensive. You need to go get it. You're looking at thirty thousand dollars to do a playground.
Should be, we'll get it on the statement.
Yeah.
I didn't look at surplus.
Right.
Online and I have not found anything, um, much, but.
Yeah, usually they put that stuff in, it stays, it'll follow up most.
Anyway, we, I'd like to see us do that in some future projects. All right. Need a motion to accept the financial statement?
Yep.
Second.
Second. There.
All in favor? I remember six, paying the bills.
Um, we went ahead and ran the checks Friday. So everything has a check on it already that we had in. And that's just a listing of, uh, what we've paid.
What was this check, Alabama going for, remember?
Um, something Jerry.
It's for unlocked units, for provalent.
Is our Alabama power off on Sunday since we got two hundred checks written to them?
Uh, let's see. They were written at different times. One was on nine twenty-four and one was ten nine.
But why, cause normally they still come in together.
Some are, um, off like that a little bit, um.
But that number's increased a lot.
Yeah. Um, the one in, on nine twenty-four, you know, we didn't meet that second meeting and I don't know what it was, the, the first part of the, of the money.
I'm, I'm curious to see how much it cost us on the power bill when it was open for three weeks for the.
Yeah.
Volunteer thing. I guarantee you we'll have proof. We may have to look at that next year.
Yeah.
Cause that's a large expense.
Yeah, if it wasn't that much, there ain't no doubt.
What did Luke say they could do?
Uh, the, he came and worked on the tracks on the Dozier and District Three is going to pay half of that.
Half the nine eighty-five?
Yeah.
Why? So you use it?
Yeah.
What about Steve Road for forty-four hundred?
That's where we ordered the appraisal of the content of the building.
We had to pay that.
We wanted, ordered it.
I thought the buyer was going to incur all that expense.
Um, well, we didn't include that, but then we, that whole deal got flopped.
Did they use the appraisal? Did they have to get it all?
Uh, I think they did use it, so we might be able to get some money back from that.
That was normal, ladies, hoping to bring it over in a couple of weeks.
Well, it's, yeah, they just, uh, changed it. I guess that, that way, yeah.
People still buying on the, uh.
Seems like it's still pretty good. Only thing I would say, Carla, just look at the power bills and see, uh.
Yeah.
Make sure we're right on those.
And there's very many full things on it.
I think some of them might got doubled up or something. We, I wanted to, uh.
Need a motion to pay all the bills except for Alabama power and then once you got time to look at that, make sure it's right.
Well, they've already been saying it this one. Well, that last one happened, okay.
Well, if you able to pay that credit for the next one.
Oh, yeah. I know that they're trying not to be wrong.
You can just bring it to the next management.
I can make us a spreadsheet on it or something if you want me to.
Yeah, that'd be better. I mean, we did have one, did we not? With addresses on them, yeah?
Yes, um, I've got, uh, the spreadsheet, the dresses on it and I was gonna give you a comparison maybe to last year to this year. We can do that.
All right. Don, you made a motion, need a second.
Second.
There.
No.
All in favor?
I haven't read.
We'll move on to that before we go further.
Yeah, we can.
Cause this is the end of your budget and that way we can see how the, why we're a hundred in the red on the back. We had budgeted, um, sixty-eight thousand dollars in the franchise tax and we only took in sixteen thousand. Why did we go up some?
Yeah, it's, uh, missed. If you'll look at that top line, some of it has got in the wrong account and that's what I was trying to go through and get some of this done before y'all had a budget meeting. But it's going to be somewhere, it's going to be applied here.
Then does that mean the overall amount is wrong?
No, I mean, the, it's just going to be in a different area. The amount has got to be what it is.
Okay, so we took in seven hundred and eleven thousand dollars for the year and we spent eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand. So we need to see why our expenditures were exceeding our revenue.
Make a hundred and fifty-five thousand, five forty-two, eighty-four.
That part, we don't have any money in there.
We know we're thirty-two thousand left.
That's not on yet. That'll become a next month.
Yeah, I'm talking about the back hill.
Yeah.
Purchasing the back hill.
Police miscellaneous expenses for, is that the payment we made?
The payment.
On the vehicles.
Yes, I'm sure that's what it is, but it shouldn't be on there. I was worried some of this stuff that I've got to go through and just make sure it's coded the right way.
Well.
The money is the same, it's just got to go to a.
I mean, that much more. Um, the police, the police cars, even though they were supposed to have been paid a year ago and we showing expenses, thirty-six thousand dollars in that, that, um, financial statement book that we got that's still owed on them. So have we made a payment on them this year?
All that's owed on them is ten thousand dollars.
I understand that, but the book said, when we got the book beginning of the year, it showed thirty-six thousand. So we made a payment that we didn't put in the budget, is what happened. Part of that didn't fit.
We made a payment on them.
Because we didn't account for that.
Was it sixteen or eighteen thousand you told me you paid on that? That was like a couple of meetings ago. I don't think she was there.
But the sale of that equipment was supposed to pay for any bit of that.
It paid for all, but about ten seven, I believe, is what we ended up.
It could have, cause that's financial statement book said there was thirty-six thousand dollars on it. So it did not pay for all of it. And that means we're going to have to sell some more equipment that they got out here.
It was, something was coded wrong, but it's only ten thousand something that the equipment didn't pay for wrong. Well, when, you know, we're human, Mandy helps me too. We've just got to, I've got to have time to go over this and make sure.
We need to have a work session, uh.
That's what I thought we were going to do and, and I'll have things looking a little bit better by that time.
Well, I'm going to gripe a bit, because when we come to these minutes, when we come to these minute meetings and we're supposed to have accurate information, that's how we do business. I mean, this is going on all the time. We can't, you cannot, in a financial situation, correct this at the end of the year to do your business. I mean, there's not even sense of looking at that.
And Carla and I talked about this, some is solid waste and it going up, and this is showing year-to-date budget, a thousand fifty dollars. Year-to-date actual, five thousand seven hundred fifty-six dollars and forty-five cents. So we going in a hole and we fixing to go in a hole even more if they going up on.
That can't be right.
The sanitation. Where are you looking at? Sanitation's a whole different account.
It's on that budget.
It's on the trailer.
Yeah.
I mean, you got fourteen thousand on these tires, you got that.
Now, that, that's where, um, now that's.
Second line for a thing.
Yeah.
That's, um... I don't know why there's anything budgeted in that, because we don't handle solid waste at the town.
Yeah, but we pay them. We pay the county on solid waste.
Um, we pay, uh, Mayor County solid waste, yeah, that's probably it. But, um, but Don is talking about waste management, is what he's talking about.
Yeah, really, uh...
It is, last page, it's the second line.
Yeah, so we're talking about solid waste.
That's Mayor County solid waste.
But solid wa, but solid waste is going up quarter high, so...
Waste management.
I meant, yeah, waste management. And I've checked on, I called the engineer's office and see who we can get to bid, and they said B F five's, only other one, and their truck is, is solid, is three to day off.
And I've tried to get the county to come along and then...
So we just upped the credit.
Look at.
The only other option would be to buy us a truck and good or sick.
Something that he'd look at.
That's what I thought. Then you're working your own pick anyway.
Just finding the responsibility to get rid of the waste is gonna be...
Well, you still, you still carry a transfer station, you sell. How do you do that? Y'all think about that. That, that is the wrong other option.
Oh, I've already thought about it already. I've run it up right after then, and they said it wasn't feasible. We used to do it.
You're gonna do a cost analysis before you make that decision.
Well, what they done now is took it over, they gonna set it twice like you know.
There's a higher risk on there. You're talking about liability and everything else.
Well, it depends on what we can do it for, and if we got away all the
That's right.
Everything against what we can contract for.
Consider you going, get them nervous handles in the road, that way you don't have to ride the truck, and we'll pick it up, dump it, and go. One-man operation.
That's what everybody should do, you know.
Say, if we've done that budget, that we budgeted all the fire department stuff and everything, do it.
Yeah. Well, I mean, the things that I noticed that went up is, um, police departments had some extra expenses in there, and then the, uh, um, tan, the street department had fourteen thousand dollars worth of repairs on equipment that we didn't account for.
Didn't come up to a hundred and fifty-five over there?
No, but we bought about, I was thirty-three thousand, so... But when you start getting all these four, five thousand dollars and all that, all this extra stuff.
Seventy thousand already on over there.
It'll add up real quick. So we have to really, because last, the last year we was in good. This year we spent more than we made. And then we really need to...
According to this.
Yeah.
According to this, would you?
Yeah. Yeah, so we have to really look at it. But we had a lot more repairs, it looks like, to the stuff that broke. And we hope to God we ain't gonna have that this year, 'cause we bought some new equipment.
Yeah, we should be good on the tip. On the town.
When, uh, we can all get together and have a work session on the budget.
What are you looking at?
Uh, maybe Daddy's better, but one mistake.
You talking about this week?
This week or next week, can you have next week?
Next week, I'm in Chattanooga all week. What about the rest, and when are y'all free?
I can't make it first.
You free tomorrow?
I can get up tomorrow, yeah.
Yeah.
At six-thirty, 'cause I don't get off till five.
Are we all free tomorrow? You did?
Yeah, I'm working.
At some point, but I have to point them to.
Can you work on this in the morning, Carla?
That's what I was gonna try to do.
See, I wanna, tomorrow at six-thirty. Budget meeting.
We need to get it by here and get it in the right order, so we can...
Can we get, um, the last two years' financials? And that way we could do a comparison, see what's went up, and get better numbers.
Most of what we sell last year was set up in the previous year.
Correct, but our, we went, we went forty, I think it was forty-six thousand dollars low on revenue for some reason too, and I didn't analyze it that close, but we was a little bit low on revenue. But hopefully we're fixing to end this split. You saying we are? It's getting by the time.
Yeah, it'll be in February or March, but, yeah, we'll get on.
And we've got the budget pretty much put together for this year.
We're working on it.
We pretty much got it where it was.
Well, it's still, but we've got other things we need to tweak.
Well, when we, when we go over tomorrow night, we can look at all of that and try to, try to get it on what's up.
All right.
Can't you get Carla to run it up, so?
I don't know.
Carla don't have time to cook, she's there at home.
She ain't at home.
That's what Sam's saying, huh?
Maybe that's why I'm looking.
All right, old business, uh, item number one, update on fireworks stand. I have not heard anymore from him. So I, I guess we'll just have to send you a letter and...
Start that process again.
Do it again, start it rolling on.
Who's that?
Uh, the guy that owns the fireworks stand. He, he was gonna have it moved about the beginning of the month.
You gonna give him rights to bring it back up here since he can't follow the rules? That's what you need to do.
I said, "Nag, you set it up on your own box, it's gonna be some more of it."
Or do something, I mean, 'cause he's not...
They fireworks stands around everywhere, people by the fireworks, so...
Well, you know, Mr. Gerald keeps working on that other building, and it might look halfway decent for it, well.
It's gonna work good.
I know, and then...
Then they're gonna set it on one more.
That's what I mean, it's coming.
We'll get you a name and address on that, tell me, and we'll get him later. All right, new business, item number one, discussed needs of the police department with Chief Mark. Me and Jeremy have discussed, uh, some items they would need, and...
Y'all got these, this got the main, uh, we might get a couple of them.
Yeah.
If you'll look on there, uh, here, send it just over, uh, in this plane, Trent. He came up with me, uh, it was June twenty-seventh. He made some recommendations, and one of the most recommendations he made was, um, hang computer kits, first car. And if you'll look on the third page, the, uh, fourth page. I've got the items there highlighted, uh, it's, one on those, right, honey. Kind of, that's the right page there, there.
Really, the down in the country, or?
And, uh, this page has got some, that's some stuff broken, need country. Uh, that's the recommendations he made for a kit for each car. I got online and looked at some of the kits, um... Of course, one of the, some of the requirements was the bolt cutters, the halogen tools, and the turrets. Of course, if you go, go online, the halogen tool, you're looking at four and fifty bucks from one of our car department carriers. And, uh, if you go on over a few more pages, it's got the down in the country kits, and you can see they're five hundred dollars a piece, and that's just for free tools. But I got on Amazon, and I got to look at, and everything that I figured out, everything that they recommended, and that's for a backpack to put in, every one of the equipment, just exactly alike, every car, all four of our new cars, plus a part-time car, and I think the total would be I got it here somewhere. Uh, three hundred fifty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents per car.
How many dollars for?
That's for five. That's for four, full-time and the part-time car too. Um, that's for bolt cutters. A wrecking bar, the wrecking bar, that I looked up, instead of four hundred dollars, that's fifty-five dollars from Home Depot, actually it's on, Amazon's what it's on. That's the first aid kit, uh, leather gloves, uh, the disposable containers for the, for needles. And one of the things on the, on the first aid kit, he recommended that it have the, uh, the the body fully cleaned up, that, uh, that powder stuff you put out, it's got it, it's got the mask, it's got the face shield, uh, the, uh, the white, uh, full-body suits. I think the only thing on there that that he rec, that recommends in this that I haven't got is, which is just, it ain't nothing but a bleach solution, which is bleach and water, and then rubbing alcohol, and commercial disinfectant. And that's for your total, it's not, in case you want to have an accident. And he said this is one of the things that they highly recommend, uh, especially with the schools, uh, and he said, "That's been a little bit of money in front, but it's gonna set you on your, on your insurance rate."
So you act, you figure when you fill all five cars for seventeen hundred dollars?
Everything that I figured up, and I went over it several times, and everything I figured up, unless something has gone up in just the last few days, it was the three hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents. That's part call.
But I'm talking about five dollars, seventeen, eighteen hundred dollars.
And you got a lot of extra, what's the stuff in the bag? These videos in the bag?
This is, that's, that's on another thing that I was gonna talk to you about, that's something separate.
Yeah, okay.
The other thing is, the, what Patty's looking at there, this is on, you know, all our vests. You see a lot of departments now are going to the, of course, they've got that strong vest carrier, but these are the ones that you get everything up on your vest and get off without setting gun. Uh, Winfield's using them. This quote right here is the ones, uh, that Ewan's going to, um, and there were a couple of other departments that's going to this right here, and all it is, is just the carrier. And that's the total price for, that's the carrier, uh, for all your packages you need for your, for your radio, uh, your magazines, your handcuffs, and, uh, I think that's all it was on there.
It says nine hundred and thirty-two dollars, that's per person.
That's, that's if you get, uh, that's if you, yeah, that's if you get the, the, the armor also. And so we've got the armor, and this company right here is point blank, it's the same company that we've got our, uh, our vests from now, so all you have to do is just call them, give them number off the vest, and then make the vest fit that armor.
So it's three oh five, and you won't get no armor?
No, we don't get armor.
You did.
But, well, all the armor we'll need is one, one set of armor, and that's for making on my one that's not got a vest.
Okay, so it's nine thirty-two.
And that would be, I said for everybody else, it's the three oh five seventy-four, and that's for the carrier armor. And I'm on one right now that's not got the, that hasn't got the armor. And actually, I looked at one, you probably got the quote on the back, I looked at one when I was at Chief Company, got measured for it, and it comes the armor, uh, the carrier, and everything, and it's adjustable, and if it's how this, from like a medium up to like a two or three X, it's fully adjustable. And actually, I think it's about a hundred dollars cheaper than what this right here is. It's basically the same setup, it's just a little bit different pass, just, uh...
You're looking at about twenty-two hundred total on that thing, for everybody.
Yeah, probably, yeah, it'd be...
You get your vest.
Be twelve twenty, twelve twenty, or four for the, basically twelve twenty fours for the officers, and then I think the quote he gave me on the vest, I got there for, measured for Chief Company, was like eight seventy-something, I, I can't remember exactly, it was under nine hundred dollars though. And I'd say this is the fully adjustable one.
What are we looking at, total, seventeen hundred and twenty-one?
No, that's for the first thing.
That's for the, that's for the, uh, active shooter kit.
Right, that's seventeen hundred, negative shooting, for these things you're looking at.
That's what I'm saying, seventeen hundred plus twenty-one.
We're looking about thirty-seven hundred total.
So, mate, thirty-seven. I can say four thousand.
It's more than that.
Four thousand dollars.
Yeah, four thousand so far. And what's his back stuff?
That's just, that's just different clothes, a lot of hands, one of the others. This one here, I think he actually, uh, Walter Craig, he, yeah, that right there is the vest that he made for the four of us. Chief Monster, yeah.
Well, that's forty-one, forty-one twenty-nine, and please, um, nice, will that cover that expense? What do you use that for? Say you got forty-one hundred, didn't you?
Yeah, and he said we got, I don't know what the core problem, we got it also.
You got about...
You know, the core one, the core one.
I know, I know. You got, um, probably around twenty. You got a little check, there's payments coming out too.
You know, we spent that big, that big chunk of change out of, uh, of four month, probably, years, that's been a couple of years ago.
How much equipment we got left still sold for the place, our cell?
Right now, the only thing we've got, we can sell, we've just got one of those are left, uh, that wrecker, I don't think it's a, I don't think it's D N L A, I don't think it can be sold, and maybe I haven't done that, I don't think I've figured it out.
That air pressure can be, can...
While we go ahead and get all the soda that we can, and that way you can...
We've got that, that little shooting house deal, I don't know what that thing, somebody's used for, shooting house.
I'm gonna make the recommendation, go ahead and let him buy the safety equipment, put in the car, build a van, because you got to have that for next year, you got to have plenty of...
That's, that's one of the things that we made, and which we got, we had a year to do all of this, uh, he'll come back, and one of the recommendations he made was, of course, qualifications, twice a year with the firearms, and he recommended that we update all of our SOPs, and the all of our officers have a copy of that, that's been took care of, we got all our SOPs ready on, and we're all, we've got a, every book is just exactly like, I put every one of them together, so everybody's book's the same. Nobody's different.
Can you put something together by tomorrow evening for the budget meeting? Tell, I mean, what you might need to spend next year?
I would just have to, I would have to get Harlem looking, so we may have it this year. Uh, and probably one of the, one of the big, the big money items too is tires, or one of the cars I've had tires to sell now, and that's five hundred and twenty-something dollars a piece. And so you're looking at two thousand dollars for your tires, a little over two thousand dollars.
But all the officers, the stuff for the vests, they've all got what they need, don't they?
Yeah, they've got all they need, on, like, so...
Yeah, all that they got.
Have a, a vest, uh, they've all got the vest, and now it's got the, the regular, it's on our carriers, these other ones, all the different things, they've got the molly traps on, that'll move your, your magazines, your handcuffs, and your radio, and all that, I'll keep it up on your, on your vest.
How many miles are we getting on the tires?
Uh, I got I got close to twenty, I think, on mine, which is pretty good, because on the chargers, we was averaging about ten thousand miles a set. Uh, we was putting two and three sets, I was putting about three sets a year on my car. We have a charger.
So we're hitting nearly a year.
Yeah, and keep them rotated, I hope guys, every time they go get their old things now, to get the tires rotated.
I got fifteen thousand miles off my pickup this week.
So, those cars are rated, they're rated at like twenty, twenty to twenty-five thousand, what them tires are rated at as well.
I think we had it in the budget for two sets, one or two sets per year. I think, kind of like, but, but I agree with his recommendation on the safety items. And then we need to... And then we need to, we need to sell.
Get an extra set for that person to stop her.
We need to sell them quick, get their phone built up.
That's on the bottom.
Can you get that?
That's on the bottom.
They need to get in here.
Yeah, I made the recommendation to get stuff to the cars near the vest right now.
Near the vest right now.
Yeah, see, what do you need, your smile's yours?
Yeah, when Steve hired, he didn't have one, so I left it his mind.
And he's getting an extra set for that person to come there.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's what the nation was for, that's good looking out for it, good looking out.
But that, you know, that, that, that's the main thing right now, the main thing right now, and it really didn't pay home till we had this mess over at school here all back, you know, you never know.
You're looking at forty-seven hundred dollars.
So.
That's seven hundred and a hundred.
And he's got, if they pop in and. He's got forty.
They've got them. But he, he told me that, he told me.
I might, I might have to blink that out, I might have a order, there's a lot of them in the court.
You can't, there's.
I'm gonna make a motion, go ahead and get that.
We're, he's already made a motion.
Okay, I'll see.
And.
And that's it, bud.
Now, I need super, so I ain't no hurry to get on.
And then we need to make a motion, settle this quick.
Oh yeah.
I think we've already made that motion.
Yeah, we just.
Other stuff, get it put on.
It's just going through everything, and saying, what's your hand, where you sold them on campus, so.
Okay, to go ahead and buy the vest and the safety.
I don't know if we should get rid of them homers, I know one person who paid twenty-five thousand dollars.
And I don't, I don't know what armor for a home.
We the only ones that can't, 'cause he's bought two sets and give it to car companies.
Yeah, if you could get them, if it was, if it was a different, uh, vehicle code, he could.
You'd think they would take them back, though, if they suddenly was gonna get them back to them, for they go ahead and let them.
Oh yeah, they'd take them back, they'd take them back and give them to somebody else.
Why would you go on?
It's a ten thirty-three program, isn't it?
Yeah, it's ten thirty-three, yeah. They, they got, they got some here recently that they had, they had taken armor proof off of, and they would actually given the title.
Who's taking action?
But ours is showing that they are, uh, armor proof.
They're pretty serious about that stuff.
With tires and that safety equipment, it needs to be purchased, so, they see putting in on this well.
But um, we just, we can, when all we can sell.
Yeah, I think, I think basically, the only thing we can sell right now is the homers, and I think that white, white truck can't sell.
I don't, I don't want to sell that.
Yeah, but we're talking about stuff that's.
Yeah, all that stuff that's down there, uh, we take probably right there now.
And we, we didn't, we could, we'd really be good if we could sell that bucket.
They'll ever sell that old camper.
That's what it fits and say, we've actually, we've got that camper too.
Camper ain't been sold?
Yeah.
What about the Conex, we use it, don't use it, we sell it?
Oh, the boxes?
Not Conex, I'm not sure, metal thing.
Yeah, that's, that's what our companies use in that for training now, they're going, they're fixing to what they have.
We can get that bad for that.
We could give a list of the stuff, I just shouldn't put it on, you know, the homers.
Yeah, the, the car, the car companies got them boxes, and they sit there, like, going there, and they do simulated burning down, and use it, and I'd just rather see them use it for.
Oh, that's fine.
So we, we can discuss four items that can be sold, the Dozer, and the.
Well, we, we need to be satisfied, we want to sell the Dozer.
Yes.
I'm not full of that either.
Why?
We use them for.
When are we using that?
They're using that right now.
They're using, they're keeping it in the gravel, because that's what they.
Man, they pushing it, we're using their loader for nothing.
Yeah, they're, they'll see it's hard for them to get it out, like loader packs, they think they take it over, push it out.
We gotta figure out something, because we have kind of a ten thousand dollar payment, so something's got to be sold.
There's still been enough.
And we do.
Well, don't we?
We're selling.
Okay, they said, don't throw the two, here's some more stuff, we got a bunch of junk.
When you took time in the daytime to walk around.
Gem equipment, that's something out there.
Yeah, that's all I thought about.
Got gem equipment, when you sell, a bunch of stuff.
Lots of them, so.
And then get it out.
Yeah, yeah, well, they do, they don't, we're walking through, sure.
But, there's a lot of that stuff that's already rolled off of the ten thirty-three, and before we left, I set that stuff that's controlled, controlled property, they can't be sold. Which, you know, two of them homers draw like brand units, and then two of them basically just for parts.
Every time you go through, I want my computer to look for us a greater.
You don't want it to do a set for one guy right now?
Oh, and then we got now to go, he can't even stand up. It's terrible. It needs to be sold.
It's at least forty years old.
I think that's all I pay.
All right, present Jeremy, we'll go ahead.
Told you, we got it approved, you buy the safety equipment, you have bulletproof vest, I think that one.
Made a, got a motion from Eugene to purchase the two items that Jeremy's got there in the brochure. The active shooter kit and the.
Second.
And the vest. Eugene made a motion, second.
Second.
All right, baby. All right. Item number two, council member Kevin Martin wants to up the date on rent from Patty.
One time I know they had to pay, but they paid it up.
He's paid, uh.
August, September, October.
Has he paid any on the power bill, or has he been on the?
I, I filled him, I was working on part of that too, I, I get a lot of that out.
I think he only paid August, he took out the portion of that building in January.
That's when he started paying.
That's not acceptable, because he took, uh, we voted back last year, he took occupancy of that building in December, actually, and then started moving equipment in in January.
In the near year?
Yes. And he's not paid the power bill or the rent.
You're saying he still owes us for seven months back?
Oh yeah.
Well, we can do what y'all want to, but he, he done a lot to fix that building up.
That was in his contract, I can't help that.
No, he was, he was to maintain it, I agree, it was.
But it was not our responsibility to go in there and run phone wires everywhere, that was him. Anything else, we fixed the, all the air conditioners for him that we didn't have to, we paid that, that's in his budget too. He's not, I mean, he moved his desk in and all the other stuff, so he's not paying that all this stuff, yeah, I know, yeah.
He stripped the floors, cleaned all that up.
But I mean, he didn't, he didn't spend no seven thousand dollars worth of rent money.
And he's painted the building inside.
That's still, he didn't have to do that.
Changed the looks of, not, but.
That was his choice.
But if you come to business and you want to look.
But that's his choice, he still has to pay the rent, he can't, he done that.
When? Did it there, when?
Did he do it in August, September, and October? He did it in August and September and October, he paid it.
Um, no, not at one time, he did, paid each month.
Where's it showing up, is rent on what, because it's not showing up on this budget at all, on rent, on property? There's rental income.
Rental income admin, on that first page of fieldbook.
He's only paid.
Six hundred dollars that he's paid.
And that's not what the rent payment is.
It was two hundred dollars a month.
No.
Three hundred, should be.
That ain't right.
Paying, but it, it should be three hundred.
Well, he's paying two hundred, I don't know if he told him that, but.
I don't either, it should be three hundred.
Okay.
He just paying whatever he wants to pay?
He's paid two hundred.
But his contract says, he will pay it first of the month, and come in here and do it, even we, even without us billing, that's in the contract.
We're not billing him.
I know, but he's supposed to come pay the bill, we shouldn't have to go begging for the payment.
Bring in contract.
He brings it up and, or mails it to one, and gives it to Mandy, I thought, I didn't know that was a story.
So he owes from January, he's only paid six hundred dollars, he's supposed to be, I thought it was three fifty, or three hundred, I mean, go back, pull that contract back.
I thought it was three fifty. Three hundred, but, I mean, we'll look at the contract and make sure.
Plus power bill, he's not paid for a whole year.
The power bill, he is supposed to go all over what it's been running.
Yeah, he's supposed to, she's supposed to look at the last year's payment, what it was, and then subtract that from what it is now, and then that's what she's supposed to add on to it. So he should get a bill for the power bill, his, that bill's gonna probably be around fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars, when he gets, and then he's gonna be upset. And then not counting the back pay on the rent, that's not being paid.
Oh, he knows he's gonna have to pay it, but.
I knew that, did, did he sign, did he sign the contract, or did?
He did.
Yes, he did.
That's in discussion, leaving that right where he wants to, he'll pay it, or we'll kick him out.
All right, we'll get with him on that, try to get it in line. Item number three, set date for Christmas parade.
Hold on, go back, so we're going, who's taking the action on that, and we'll get a follow-up, because this has been going on for a year. So is he gonna have the final numbers for the power bill too?
I'll get those, I've started working on the spreadsheet, I've just got to have time to get it done. I know y'all don't think I do anything, but I do.
Where are we at?
For Christmas parade.
Uh, we typically do the, second Monday in December.
What's the date on that?
The ten.
That's about like we do a year.
Well, no, the ninth, I mean, I'm sorry.
That's the, uh, that is that on the, that's as good as we can do, get, have it before everybody starts having, or after someone has.
Well, I asked him about the tenth or twelfth, and he said he already had it on his calendar for the night, so, we're pretty much locked in.
What are you talking about?
Uh, seven.
For me, that's fine.
In the future, it would be good to have it on a Thursday night, so, the business, the restaurants would be open at, bring some more people.
Thursday, so that'd be ten.
Any month.
That he can't do it this year.
He's got us pegged for the night, this year.
Undressed by.
Santa Claus.
Oh yeah, if he can change it, well, I'm like, Carl, I believe Thursday night would be better for us than Monday night.
Phil Campbell's is at Thursday night.
Oh, the twelfth.
See. December, yeah, Thursday night, I'd be the twelfth.
Well, I leave that out.
Try to, Friday night, if y'all wanna do a Friday night parade.
If they can do it, I don't care.
Um, check your ball game, I got a schedule.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, I got the basketball schedule.
I don't have one yet.
Yeah, it's a, they've almost got it completed.
He got some issues, he ain't on plan.
Apparently, so you got a schedule?
Yeah, I have a schedule.
Probably on plan.
Yeah.
What are we looking like the week of the night, December?
Um, they play the seventh, ninth, and fourteenth, Junior High plays at the NAC tournament, don't know where it's at. December tenth, the degree at home, December twelfth, thirteenth, fourteenth is the NAC tournament.
So it ain't gonna matter. So we'll just call it the night, and uh, who, where do they play, who do they play tonight?
They don't, it's Junior High's playing, so.
Well, they, yeah, don't work out.
Yeah.
All right, so, Monday, December the night, is that good with everybody?
I'm gonna be here today, be great.
Whoa.
I'll be in Pigeon Forge.
They're right about, I don't know.
She plans them nights, she.
So that's fine, y'all can carry on, I don't have to be, I'm in Pigeon Forge that week.
Discuss, okay, all right, item number four, discuss date for a work session, we're gonna do that tomorrow night?
Yeah.
Tomorrow evening. Six thirty. Um, item number five, that, we can omit that. Which Gerald got the doors, on the back and on the side, he got the tow pass locks put on, and uh, they all work good, doing their job. Item number six, we have, uh, we've been talking with the state about this for a while, and they want to, now, I think it would benefit us to do that too. Right now, State Highway two fifty-three comes through the middle of town. Right. And it ends at the four-way. Um, they want to trade, Old Hackleburg Road, where it turns off of two fifty-three, and goes to forty-three. They want to take that over at State Highway two fifty-three, and give us the road through town. I don't, I mean, I.
And then it's so much better for them than so much better for us, we don't need State Highway running right downtown.
It would benefit the state, because they use commercial use on that road, and we could control downtown mall. With a middle State Highway, we really can't do anything. Can you think of any negatives?
It's just, that road we have to pave, because we on the outside where the wrangler is, that's our responsibility, we're just swapping responsibility, um.
Don't knock us out of any kind of potential grants or anything like that.
It could, for, could it for beautification or anything like that, since they gave us the money to do that, anything like that?
Be a State Highway, isn't it, right?
Curves, anything.
And they could make us move everything downtown if they wanted to, because it's State Highway, why are we down?
Like, neighbor day, or any, anytime we gotta shut the highway down, we gotta go to the state and get their permission, and we'll have to do that.
Unless we keep the trucks from coming, because they'll show up on our GPS as an alternate route, instead, instead of coming right down there.
And in all actuality, we can't prevent eighteen weather from coming downtown right now, because it's State Highway.
We try, but we couldn't.
Until that one ripped down the power lines right back here.
I think that's as good a move as could be made.
So if y'all are okay with that, we'll.
See, I don't think there's any negatives to this.
I don't know many, I'm, I'm, thought about it. They've wanted to do it for a while, and we've kicked it around, but um, I think it would benefit us. All right, I need to get a motion to, Don, that's.
Motion. Tell me, Doctor, don't make a motion.
Yeah.
Second.
Second.
Kevin. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, item number seven, discuss legal fees from People's Trust Bank. We got a bill from their attorney.
Wait a minute, I just thought of something, we need to get them to fix that hill before we.
What hill?
Keeps washing away, you know, when you go through main town, and turn right on two fifty-three, start down the hill, it's always washing away that the left, down through that.
You go on Highway four, get another morning, tell them to bring it fixed.
We can lean on them and get them to fix that, they were looking at it at one time anyway.
Where at?
When you go to, to the stop sign.
Oh yeah, they came and looked at it.
Yeah.
They said they, that was basically out of their budget, that they would help us any way they could, but, that's taking on all the water coming out of town, and uh.
And it is, but they might help us since we.
He, he said they definitely would help us all they could, they, with their equipment, they'd do whatever they could, and financially, they would help what they could, but they could not put enough into it.
To do it.
To do it exactly like it needed to be.
Well, it, it really needs to be fixed.
And Wes said. And Wes said they would do that if we traded or not.
Now, like the street department will start, soon, we'll have to start cleaning out the corners and everybody getting ready for the rainy season, if we're at it.
But, yeah, they, they.
It will in March, we'll come, we'll have a monsoon.
All right, back to item number seven, uh, we got a bill from their attorneys for ninety-five hundred dollars. And I gave that to Tony to look over. Um, what's that called? They, they've got out of, out of, itemized bill where he's got his hours broke down for everything he done, but it's legal work that he was doing, uh, when we were dealing with the bank.
From the grocery store.
Yeah.
Well, that will be there, if he worked for them, bank will pay that, but there's our attorney. Well, well, look at that, Mr. Glenn is our attorney, that's what we pay. We didn't deal with him, are we bound to pay that, Mr. Glenn?
Well, I think, I think we are, we're bound to pay some, I think that's about two times too much. He, he did some work, all right, and no question about it, but most of what he did was to cover the bank, not the town of Hackleburg.
What I'm saying, represent them.
I feel like that's way too much in that bit.
Yeah, basically that's it.
It, I, I guess in the end, you could say we, we decided not to go with them, they're saying they don't know the legal fees we owe them. Um, but I, I'm with Tony, I feel like we got overcharged on what.
Invoicing.
What I was thinking about suggesting was, offered you five thousand dollars, if he didn't take it, then we, we, the ball's in his court at that point.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll do something about it.
I'll make a motion to go with your suggestion. Make sure our legal counsel, one attorney.
Eugene made a motion.
I would be there during that.
To.
I know, you can get out of it.
See, the purpose was deliberately this, I think.
Yeah, I know.
No, I didn't, I obviously showed her.
All right, well, you have a stone, it's.
I'm scared, but you.
Yeah.
Uh, there's a second.
Yeah, you got a second, yeah.
Not yet.
I, I plan my business meetings.
I know, very well know that.
Obviously, y'all, y'all, y'all put all these special meetings in here, you do them.
Everybody. Okay. All right, item number ten, discuss purchasing a new copier for the clerk's office. Have you got any, uh?
There's some paperwork in here.
Did we not approve to buy one of these our first year in here or was that?
Seems like we did.
And you never got one?
Well, no, we've never gotten one, I just.
Because I thought we approved it, I mean, I thought that was one of the first thing we bought.
We're having a budget now, or we did.
But I've got a couple of prices, I thought I would just bring it before you.
Yeah.
Or if you want me to go ahead and spend the five thousand dollars, I'll wait.
You got a hand, you could have, but, uh, appreciate you bringing it.
Um, there is a Rico machine that it's similar to the one in the police department, which is a very good machine and, um, it's a color, automated document feeder, matches stand, internal finisher, network printing, scanning and fax. Um, it shows all the features here.
I guess it's got that printer, glass envelope, we got it ordered.
The price he quoted me was forty-eight hundred and fifty dollars. And he said there is another one that there's a, sheets on it behind there, it's a, an off-brand that he said they're getting now. Um, but it's a good machine, it's a KOSERA, I, I've never heard of it. Um.
They used to make good cell phones.
I'm sorry?
They used to make good cell phones, KOSERA?
Um.
It had a price.
But it's.
Copy business.
It's thirty-seven ninety, so.
I like it better, I do that up.
Have they got a warranty on them, a nice service on them, a warranty or they say?
Um, I think that process with maintenance agreement.
We need to give the I P S, we would be wasting our paper.
Well, we're never.
In clerk's office, you have to keep our copies.
We gotta have a friend or company.
But, um, we'd need a maintenance agreement because right now we don't have one, and I had to get him to come work on that machine in there not long ago. And I think it was like three or four hundred dollars, and that's, we shouldn't have to, to pay that.
What kind of guy now, is it similar to this?
It's an old one, it looks, it's a, I think it's a Rico also.
So he wouldn't, would they take it on trade or do they do that, I don't know if they.
No, I mean, that thing is so worn out, it's been in here for years, um, Steve Hood made the statement that he would lock it for the fire department and.
I got plenty of money, it's for safe. I got plenty of money, it's for safe.
If you look at your features on both of them, option B has the thirty-two pages committed compared to the twenty pages, so it, it sounds, that would be a better option, and plus it's, it's actually, um, eleven hundred dollars cheaper.
Yeah.
The second.
Yeah.
I, I, like I said, I've never heard of that one, but he said it's a good machine.
Yeah.
And he will work on that one for them.
Oh, yeah.
And what, is he, is this including a service agreement or is that what's not?
I think it is, but I'll make sure because I told him that we'd have to have a maintenance agreement.
And how long was that maintenance agreement, four or five years, six, whatever?
Um, I'll have to make sure about that, I'll talk to Brad tomorrow and, and make sure of that.
I'm sure the life after life, the, the maintenance agreement go away after you're near it.
I like that one, more combat, too, that does the same paper, the name is big.
I'll make a motion to buy the second.
It don't need the seventeen inch paper.
You wasn't here, we, we made a motion to buy one, uh, two years ago, but we're buying it now.
The seventeen.
You know what?
Seventeen.
Second.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, we just not making repairs on that out.
Second one's the best one, need a motion.
It don't, it don't print the eleven seventeen, so that or whatever.
How could you print eleven seventeen?
I don't use the eleven seventeen, we use the.
Not that much.
We use legal.
Right.
Which, it does later in legal, so that's about how we use.
I'm behind that.
Well, second, the motion, I want to say.
Have you made the motion?
Yeah. Okay, be good.
We did purchase me, um, a new little copier or new printer at my desk because it was, it, it does, it'd been here for years as well and, um, it was, it's a very good one.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed?
Yeah.
And. So, folks, Donald.
Forget her, do like, plant stone, get her tablet.
Just mark it off and you don't care, I'm, I'm for it.
All right. Gravel and Gray, Tim Cantrell, Steve Pickens, Charlotte Dollar, Betty Daniels. Burned that building, more than that, where is this, uh, restaurant burned, must have been painted up, maybe we could dump it somewhere. They just needed one load.
So we just held it up on the driveway.
What's Tim Cantrell?
Where we can, we can dump it.
He just wants to load it.
That's for that new trailer he put in there. Is what that is, that person.
What? I put it over next to.
She's putting trailer together.
Yeah.
And I know she needs it on that road going to the big screen.
She moved that up there.
Yeah.
Charlie, where?
Over there, it was good. Motion to do that.
Add Eugene to the great gravel. And the gravel.
He can't get the county to do it.
Well, he's, he's doing like a, the one mentioned, preceded him, it wasn't there, he got the bucket, we got the city limits, I got him doing nothing for me. I'm calling all names.
We changed it up, too. Motion to do that.
All right, made the motion, second.
Second.
Kevin, all in favor?
All in.
I don't even know how he is, but he's been by a lot of stuff.
Yeah, that'd be, about a bit loose.
I meant, I'd be a time share.
They may have been for a journey or not, a month of journey or not.
Motion to do a journey.
Six thousand dollars.
I like it.
Second.
Second. Kevin, you're on the road. A journey, close on.
I'll work.
Eight.
So, handle the mixture, thank God, you know.
We're on the motion for thirty-one.
We'll get it cleaned up, so.